Members of former Congress, may I call the meeting to order? Good afternoon. We will start a series of five days of special F C meeting involving twenty-one sessions to examine the twenty nineteen twenty twenty draft estimates to ensure that funding source will not exceed what is required under different policies. I will first give the floor to the relevant policy secretary to give a short introduction at the start of each session and members can see it according to your usual practice. Prior to the meeting, members have submitted seven thousand written questions and the administration has promised that about three thousand three hundred replies will be given before at the relevant session and the outstanding questions will be responded to by the eighth of May. I now invite members to request to speak button and if you have a follow-up question on a written question, please refer to the serial number on the top hand, top right-hand corner of the page. If members cannot ask the questions you want at the meeting, you may do so by writing and members may ask our secretaries for the form for supplementary questions and hand them back to our staff. At the end of the meeting, the administration will try their very best to reply by the eighth of May. This session is for the secretary for the civil service. I will give the floor to secretary for a very short introduction. Thank you.
Among the matters related to the civil service in the twenty nineteen twenty draft estimates of expenditure, I like to focus my introduction on two items. First, on civil service establishment, in twenty nineteen twenty, we'll continue to suitably increase the manpower of government departments. The civil service establishment is expected to increase by three thousand four hundred eighty-one posts, representing a year-on-year increase of about one point eight percent and resuming the stable growth of about one to two percent in the past ten years. Among the forty percent of the additional posts will be for work related to people's livelihood, such as medical services provided by the Department of Health, Education and Support Services for the underprivileged. Among forty percent or so will be invested on Hong Kong's future economic development, including infrastructure, land and housing, as well as innovation and technology-related work. About eighty percent of the additional manpower belong to middle and low ranks, covering a number of frontline grades. The government has all along been managing the civil service establishment in a prudent manner. The increase in manpower will enable the civil service to grow safely on the one hand and meet the practical manpower needs of government departments for implementing new government measures and coping with the additional workload. The second item of my introduction is about financial provisions. In the twenty nineteen twenty draft estimates of expenditure, the financial provisions under a few heads of expenditure related to my policy area of management of the civil service, they include A Head thirty-seven, Department of Health, Program Seven, Medical and Dental Treatment for Civil Servants. A financial provision of two point one 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 billion dollars is proposed, representing an increase of twenty-seven point nine percent over the twenty eighteen nineteen revised estimate. This is to allow the government to continually improve the various medical and dental services for civil service eligible persons, including pensioners. One thousand and ten million dollars of the provision will be allocated to families, clinics and government dental clinics for strengthening their manpower support and the establishment of additional specialized dental surgeries, other than the daily operating expenditure of the clinics. Moreover, the Department of Health will also use the provision in twenty nineteen twenty to add two new programs at the families' clinics, namely the Risk Assessment and Management Program for Improving the Quality of Care for Patients with Diabetes, Melitus and the Stable Drug Use Pilot Program for Enhancing the Drug Safety for Patients with Chronic Diseases and Stable Condition required to take multiple types of drugs. Regarding the payment and reimbursement of medical fees and hospital charges, an allocation of one thousand one hundred and one point one million dollars is proposed for reimbursing medical expenses applied for by eligible persons. And two head one twenty pensions, Program One Public and Judicial Service Pension Benefits, an amount of thirty-eight thousand two hundred ninety-six point five million dollars is proposed for pension payments to retirees, representing an increase of seven percent over the twenty eighteen nineteen revised draft estimate. The increase is mainly due to an estimated increase in the number of new retirees and the full year effect of pension payments to those retiring in twenty eighteen nineteen. This is the end of my introduction, Chairman. I welcome questions from members. Mister Jimmy Ng. I'd like to ask a question on C S B O two three. There is a chart on the number of civil servants that have chosen to extend their service. Each department, about ten percent of them have opted to delay their retirement. For C S B, for F S and T B, eight out of twenty. And for Innovation and Technology Bureau, one out of forty-two, that is a double-digit or figure very low. So are there reasons for this? Thank you. Thank you. Mister Ng.
We allow civil servants to serve a little bit longer beyond retirement in a flexible manner. That is based on the operational needs of individual departments and without jeopardizing promotion prospects of other civil servants. So for individual departments and bureaus, they have their own operational needs in deciding on the number of such civil servants. For specific information, you may have to refer them to individual departments. Thank you. So does the secretary mean that even though serving civil servant wants to extend his service beyond retirement, that application can be turned down if the bureau is of the view that it is not required? Are you referring to N X A or B? A. Number of eligible civil servants who have taken the option. I believe the option is exercised by the civil servants. Oh, this is different because we have a plan for civil servants employed between twenty fifteen and twenty two thousand and twenty fifteen, they can take up the option. We have given them two years to exercise their option. Different bureaus and departments. I mean, members of the civil service from these bureaus and departments can choose whether they want to do so. So it is a bit difficult to say here why for some departments, the figures are higher and some are lower. That may be because in some departments, some civil servants are retiring quite soon and they have exercised their option earlier on in the two-year period. And the period is still in progress, so the table may not be too useful for comparison purpose. Mister Ronnie Chan, my question relates to C S B O O eight and C S B O five two. It is mentioned that the new service, I mean, the Civil Service Academy will not be completed until twenty twenty. That is quite a while from now. For Singapore, they offer four hundred training programs involving seventeen different areas, data analysis and finance management, so and so forth. And for Canada, they provide I T, human resources and financial services, programs for their civil service. Since fintech and I T are very important, and we also attach a lot of significance to developments of fintech in Hong Kong, pending completion of the academy, is any systematic way for the civil service to acquire such knowledge? And will the expense come out from the C S B or elsewhere? Another question relates to C S B O six two. The twenty eighteen policy address said that some designated Chinese medicine clinics will form part of the benefits of civil servants. In some Chinese hospitals, including Two Moon Hospital, Eastern Hospital, Q W H and Tonghua Hospital, they already provide acupuncture and medical Chinese medical services. So will you discuss with some tertiary institutions so that the civil service can enjoy such services as well? Thank you. Two questions. Training for the civil service. The Civil Service Academy is being planned and before its commissioning, we are providing training to our civil servants through the Civil Service Training Development and Training Institute. The institute has all along been providing training programs for civil servants, for new recruits, on leadership, on innovation, innovative ideas and on national and national studies. If there is training opportunities needed for other areas, we are willing to discuss with the relevant policy bureaus to see how we can provide such program within the civil service. C S T D I, we have already provided such programs.
Chinese medicine. Let me give you a brief response. In fact, last year in the policy address, the chief executive already announced that Chinese medicine would be included as part of the medical and dental treatments of civil servants. And we're actively following up the matter with the relevant parties, such as the Department of Health, Hospital Authority and experts. And we're looking into the implementation of this service in the near future, including the scope of service, the fees to be charged, et cetera. This is our ongoing effort and when the time is right, we will announce the details. Miss Claudia Mo, four minutes. Thank you. C S B zero three nine. Well, I'd like to give a comment and I'd like to make a criticism. We always have this saying that to destroy a city, we should destroy the language of the city first. And I have found that, in fact, recently, especially after C Y Leng's era, we have seen more and more usage of party or Communist Party language in the government officials' speeches and in official writing. There are a number of terminologies that we commonly see, for example, intangible cultural heritage, I C H. Well, this is an exact copy of the diction of the Communist Party. Well, we used to say jai yong in Chinese to mean crowded. Now they transpose the two characters and then they even change the pronunciation of one of the Cantonese characters. And also the archaic English use of the word come. This is colonial and in fact, this should be replaced by and. And also, let me give you another example. Nursery, come, crash center. What is meant by that? C R C H E? I am astonished. This is clearly archaic and obsolete. Well, your answer is that there is no fixed rule. We keep up with the times, so it's pointless to pursue this question. I just hope the government will stay vigilant. My question is C E O zero zero five about the information coordinator of the C's office. But so far, after Carrie Lam has assumed office, the post remains vacant and now everything is in a mess. Well, actually, a joint press conference was recently held on the three major matters. That's because of a lack of an information coordinator. Or can you just tell me the answer? Well, in fact, after C Y Leng, I mean, the previous information coordinator was really a veteran. Well, he was somebody in the in the TV station, T V B. And then just six months after C Y Leng assumed office, she left the post, probably scared off. And then the post was left vacant, well, probably because of all the mess that were made, that was made. So you decided not to fill this vacancy. Well, you can answer the C E S, the question about the chief executive's office later. Answer the two questions first. About the first point, I think this is a comment from Miss Claudia Mo about the use of official languages. Hong Kong is an international city. Language is a tool of communication. And inevitably, when we have exchanges with our stakeholders and when we communicate with them, we tend to have mutual influences. Well, we had note Miss Claudia Mo's comments on our use of languages and she would often put forward improvements and we also hit the different views. Please prop, change the terminology, change it back to what we normally use for improvement, for example. And also refuse come rubbish. I see this label on the rubbish bin. Please remove the word come and replace it with and. I'm not the expert, Chairman. I will reflect this view to the relevant colleagues. Next, Miss Tanya, Miss Ann Chang. Well, how adorable is Miss Claudia Mo? Well, she talks about the word crowded and in Chinese, jai yong or yong zai. Well, in fact, I just flipped the dictionary and the Chinese term for crowded is in fact yong zai. And I think that the, after all, the government officials must have checked the dictionaries before they release their statements. And I'd like to follow up on zero zero four, a question put by Miss Rebecca Chan. This is a question about post-retirement service contract scheme. It has been very well received. You have received one application per four retirees. And I have this question for the secretary. According to some civil servants, they would very much like to stay in the civil service. But since they have reached retirement age, they would like to spend less time in the government. Will part-time post be possible? And let me also ask other questions in one go. So that's one question. The other question is C S B zero zero eight. We have a civil service college which will be commissioned in twenty twenty-six. The original site is Shine and it will be moved to the vacant school premises in Kowloon in twenty twenty-one, I suppose. So have you factored in this character's school campus to be used for re-provisioning Shine Center in your draft estimates and what is roughly the estimate? Two questions about post-retirement service contract scheme. We do allow non-full-time contract posts, depending on the operational needs of departments. When appropriate, these posts can be considered. About the new civil service college to be built in Kun Tong and about the Shine Center, it will be temporarily re-provisioned. It is included in the draft estimates, albeit not under the Civil Service Bureau. This is under the purview of the Architectural Services Department. In terms of retrofitting the existing premises, et cetera, it's been included. Anyway, about part-time posts, well, I sincerely hope that the secretary you would consider it because we have many seasoned civil servants. We should value their expertise and we should invite them to work as part-time to serve the government. I still have some time and I'd like to follow up on another matter about national studies in the mainland. I want to know whether this is a request coming from outside or whether the curriculum is drawn up by the mainland authorities. That is to say, we are required to, you know, go through these subjects in the courses. And I am referring to C S B zero zero seven. About the national studies training programs, we are in charge of drawing up the curricula, for example, that should be enhanced understanding of the basic law among civil servants and also deeper understanding of various issues in the mainland. And also Greater Bay Area, we decide the curriculum based on the need of civil servants. Doctor Chen Sheng Tai. Well, I have three questions about C S B zero zero four. Now, from the figures, for the full-time post-retirement service contract staff, P R S C, I'm looking at the number of full-time P R S C staff and number of applications received, in particular for Correctional Services Department and the Customs and Excise Department. Then the figures are on the high side, for example, Correctional Services Department, two hundred and fifty-four applications, out of which one hundred and fourteen were approved and four hundred and sixteen for C and E Department, out of which one hundred and fifty-one applications were approved. That means these staff members would be allowed to take up the original post upon approval of their applications. Now, we also have a succession problem within the civil service and also the retire, the retirement, the peak of retirement. So I'd like to know whether this is actually the real problem facing the C S D and the C and E Department. About the P R S C scheme, the head of bureau or department would consider the operational needs and the staffing requirement. And the table shows the statistics that we've collected. But I think for details, you need to ask these departments about the particular reasons of approving so many applications. I'm afraid I cannot give a detailed account about all the seventy-plus departments and bureaus in the government. I just hope the secretary would understand the point because I learned about some things happening within the C S D and I think the problem affects the inmates' rights and the environment. And also, I'd like to ask about C S B zero one nine. In N X A, I am intrigued by a particular number about the change in establishment of a bureau, department, organization. In twenty nineteen eighteen, I see there is one exception, that is for the Hospital Authority, there is a minus one hundred and thirty-five posts. I'd like to know why. The answer is simple. When the Hospital Authority was established, some civil servants were so-called transferred, or rather, let me put it this way, stayed in the Hospital Authority to serve the H A and they would be retired at the designated retirement age. And these posts will then be taken up by non-civil servants, subject to the resources and the internal deployment of H A. And that is why every year, we would see, for example, for Hospital Authority and on the Hong Kong Monetary Authority, which are independent statutory bodies, due to legacy reasons, there would be civil servants retiring every year and there would be a minus change in the establishment. Let me explain this way. Does it happen particularly for this year or does it happen every year? Well, you will see these negative or minus figures from year to year. Every year, when we have civil servants reaching retirement age in these statutory bodies, you will see a minus figure and that also accounts for the Hospital Authority. I also like to ask about the zero one six. According to media reports, for the so-called four days of sick leave entitlement, I see that some government departments, Hong Kong Post Office, Education Bureau and E M S D, these departments or bureaus tend to have more staff taking paid sick leave for less than four consecutive days, over one thousand of them. I'd like to know why. Are you referring to the sick leave entitlement? Because of the operational need of individual departments? In fact, most of these bureaus, departments or offices at present allow staff to take paid sick leave for less than four consecutive days as provided in the employment ordinance. However, there are also other staff on temporary contracts and on other employment arrangements and due to operational reasons, they are not allowed to take paid sick leave for less than four consecutive days. Again, I think you need to ask the individual departments.
Mister Pun Shiu Ping. Thank you. In his opening remarks, the secretary mentioned the civil service establishment and financial provisions. The latter involves a provision for medical and dental treatment for civil servants. Like to follow up on my question. C S B O six one. And the reply from the administration is for the time taken for non-urgent treatment. Now, last year it was four to thirty-three months and now it's risen to six to forty-two months. That means the time taken for specialized dental services has lengthened, the situation has deteriorated. What is the reason for that? And that's a big range from six to forty-two months. The reasons for that, please. And regarding providing dental services in public-private partnership model, according to the administration, because of cost effectiveness and difficulties and monitoring, so and so forth, this will not be considered for the time being. Now, for cathact operation and and colon endoscopy, and this is, there is a similar public-private partnership arrangement. So if it's not considered at this stage, when will it be considered?
And oh forty-three, my question about five-day week. From twenty oh six to now, when five-day week was first introduced, about seventy-five percent of the civil servants are enjoying five-day weeks. In other words, twenty-five percent of their peers cannot enjoy five-days week and this will affect civil service morale. From last year to now, there's been an increase of two percent only. So it would take a long time before the whole civil service can have five-day weeks. So we introduce new measures to ensure that all civil servants can work five days a week. And in part B of your reply, you said that different departments You said that different departments have different arrangements and the C S B has not done a survey on the state of implementation across the civil service. Now, in order to implement five-day week across the civil service, I think you'll have to review their work, please. Next week, in the development panel, we will have a detailed paper. I think I will wait till then to give a detailed response to Mr. Pun. And as for situation, Department of Health, I defer to my colleague. Regarding emergency dental services. Now, because our specialized dental services are different, some for periodontic treatment and some for correction and so and so forth. There is a great demand for such services and the C S B has increased resources for us. In twenty nineteen, we have already started new services. And where resources permit, we'll continue to boost our service so as to shorten the waiting time. Mr. Wu Jiwei, my first question relates to C S B oh five three. My question for the C S B is, new civil service college will be set up in Kuntong. What about training centers scattered in different government departments? What will be the floor, what are the floor area and the scope of program provided? And whether there is any rental involvement? But I don't even have a word of reply from the Secretary. So I'd like to ask whether the Secretary is aware of the space required by different departments. The program contents and also the expenses. If no such information is provided, then I could assess whether the new service civil service training center to be re-provisioned in Kuntong to replace the one in North Point is really appropriate. So I will give the Secretary another opportunity. Now, I'm not just talking about the discipline services, but the other departments as well. I'd like to know the location, floor area, departments concerned, so and so forth for the other civil service training facilities here. The Kuntong Civil Service College will impact on Shine. The training center will be re-provisioned here and also C S T D I will also be re-provisioned here. What are the priorities of consideration when it comes to the allocation of space for both Shine and C S T D I? And in your opening remarks, Secretary, you mentioned medical and dental treatments for civil servants. Civil servants can be given civil service priority discs at H A outpatient clinics. That is how they take up part of the provisions for the public. And now, the government is seeking money for medical or families and dental clinics for civil servants. And we want some of these clinics to provide slots for members of the public. And we are told that is not feasible because these clinics are mainly for civil servants. Secretary, will you change your stance? Because families' clinics have got the hardware to serve the community as well. So that limited resources can be better utilized to serve the whole of Hong Kong. Thank you. Three parts to Mr. Wu's question. First is on training. For the new civil service college under planning. It will provide training, in a general training for civil servants. For discipline services and some other departments, they have their dedicated training facilities. And they will secure resources and manage these facilities based on their needs. So we cannot provide any statistics to Mr. Wu in this regard. As for Kuntong, the new Kuntong College, we are now still doing advanced planning. And when the design is available, we will seek funding approval from the Finance Committee. And of course, it will be managed by the C S B. And we have a contractual obligation to provide dental and medical benefits to civil servants. Our services are very limited and they are already insufficient to cover our civil service. I cannot see any room for making available slots in the family's clinic to serve the public. Please turn on the microphone for Mr. Wu Jiwei. My question is, since the hardware is already there, can you make use of the hardware? And then you cooperate with H A so that these places can also serve members of the public. Don't misrepresent me. I'm not saying that civil servants should not be served. Now, my question is, my reply is, both the software and hardware are well below our required quantity, so we do not have any opportunity to serve the public with these clinics. C S B oh oh five, a question by Miss Rebecca Chen about disabled civil servants. According to the information here, there are over three thousand persons with disabilities working for the government. I want to commend the government for recruiting persons with disabilities to serve in the government. The percentage is about one point eight percent, but I must criticize Invest Hong Kong, the Observatory and also the Information Services Department. They have only employed one P W D respectively, R T H K two, Security Bureau and Transport and Housing Bureau, two each. This is a far cry from the normal percentage in other departments of the civil servant service. So I urge the government to require these departments to employ an appropriate percentage of P W Ds which have difficult, who have difficulties in seeking enjoyment, employment. They complain to us from time to time. Another is C S B oh one three, integrity, integrity training of civil servants. As we all know, there was a rather shocking incident recently. In quieting, one of the constituencies lost voters' register. Now, I'm not, I'm not referring to this case, but every year you have seven thousand, seven hundred and ten talks on corruption prevention. And every year, you have an average attendance of over twenty-eight thousand, two hundred civil servants per year in these courses. Is it because you don't have the civil service college, you cannot do more? Only twenty-eight thousand out of hundred and sixty thousand civil servants have attended such courses. No wonder such a shocking incident as the loss of the voter register has occurred. Secretary, regarding employment of P W D. The government has, on various fronts, encouraged the employment of P W Ds. When I meet with heads of departments. As usual, I will encourage them to give more opportunities to P W Ds when vacancies arise. We have facilitation measures for employing P W Ds. If they can satisfy certain requirements. As I said, we give them a priority treatment so that they can serve individual departments. As regards the practice of the departments themselves, I will continue to remind them. And as for the integrity of the civil service, we set a lot of store by that. Will provide more training program for promoting integrity. And apart from physical programs, we have online training programs through our website and civil servants can take e-learning programs. Thank you. Mr. Ray Chen, thank you.
And I have got a question on welfare benefits for spouse of homosexual civil servants. Perhaps a case is pending at the C F A. The administration hasn't provided any details of a question related to facts. The C M A B has got a code of conduct for elimination of discrimination against a sexual minority. I'd like to know whether C S B agrees that C M A B promotes the code of conduct? And does that represent the government's policy direction? Now, civil servants are employees of the government. So shouldn't they be protected according to this code of conduct?
That is, if a company or an enterprise is required to observe this code to eliminate discrimination. Then the government, as the largest employer in Hong Kong, should do the same. And if the answer is in the affirmative, that is, you give this undertaking to give a level playing field for all civil servants regardless of their sexual orientation. And if the answer is in the affirmative, then can you answer me? Why is it that family members or same-sex spouse of a civil servant is treated differently? I understand that the government has been making some effort. For example, regarding the Long and Meritorious Service Travel Award Scheme. Now, the word spouse has been removed and that there is no such restriction anymore. Of course, the government says that it has nothing to do with whether it is the spouse of a same-sex couple. And that any travel companion will do. At the level of the C S B, will there be more measures? Not in the name of providing benefits to same-sex spouse, but some measures to make sure that the spouse of civil servants will not be restricted to heterosexual spouse.
Well, I think Mr. Chan's question is, in essence, asking us to comment on a C F A case pending judgment. I think it's difficult to answer this question. We're not going to comment on our approach, whether this is in line with any kind of requirement or code of conduct. What we're doing is to act in accordance with the Civil Service Regulation about the definition of spouse. And based on the current policy, we perform our daily operation. As for what happens in the future, I think we should wait for clarification from the court. The C M A B's code applies to all employers in Hong Kong. It's for their reference and for their consideration. Whereas for our day-to-day operation, we do note the code and we also need to consider you know, any arrangements. Well, Chairman. I am in fact commanding the government's efforts in relaxing the definition. So that in the future, whether or not there is a judgment handed down by the court or change in legislation will consider relaxing the definition of spouse. Well, as Mr. Chan mentioned just now about the Long and Meritorious Service Travel Award Scheme, we have relaxed the criterion. Well, of course, this is not specifically for allowing spouse of a same-sex partner to enjoy the benefit. Well, in fact, the crux of the matter is that some civil servants are not married. And they wonder why they cannot take a travel companion to enjoy the travel scheme. And because of the basket of reasons, we propose this change.
Mr. Charles Mark, I'd like to follow up on C S B zero four one. I asked this question because I wanted to know about the civil servants in particular. The head of grades, for example, whether they are familiar with the technology which they are supposed to be using. I tried to get specific answers to my specific questions, to no avail. For example, I asked whether the civil servants have received training on innovation technology for more than one hour, three hours, five hours respectively. I asked specifically the percentage. Well, in fact, you gave me one small number, that is, two thousand civil servants. Well, in fact, there were about forty-three thousand officers in individual bureaus and departments. That means less than five percent of them have taken these courses. I asked this question because of the four thousand dollar dish out under the caring and sharing scheme. For the lower-ranked civil servants. They had no knowledge of technology. And then, well, in fact, according to the Secretary, well, I mean, the Secretary was told that it would take eighteen months to develop this system for electronic forms to be used. And Secretary just releases information to the public. I don't think the Secretary should make such a remark without fact-checked. So my question is about directorate posts and also politically appointed officials. Whether they received any training and what kind of training they received. I'd like you to provide answer on these matters. Because I asked specifically the number of training hours, one, three, five hours and the percentage, you didn't answer. Now, my question is about civil servants and P A Os, whether they need to take these courses. Of course, of course, they need to, but I'm asking whether they have indeed undergone training. About directorate grade officers and P A Os, whether I T training is available. Regarding the D-grade offices, we have a ten-day training program and also a three-week leadership program. And we've also added elements of the use of new technologies, smart government, smart government, smart city. And also social media content in the training programs. And apart from illustration in classroom, we also arrange for trainees to meet with I T startups and to visit the premises. And we also collaborate with professional organizations and overseas universities. We organize workshops on exploring the measures to promote I N T. And we also have another new subject that is opportunities and challenges facing the use of big data in the design of government services. On a regular basis, we also hold thematic talks. We invite experts, industry practitioners and government officials in, on topics such as innovation technology, for them to share their experience. For example, we had a seminar about the opportunities in opening up data and also open data policy and also, well, Chairman, please, don't waste my time. But please give me the opportunity for me to brief you on the content of our training programs. Why don't you give me a written reply instead? If you have so much to tell, you should have included that in your answer. So please give us a written reply about what you just said. I still, however, think that we need to have more specifically I still, however, think that we need to have more specifically tailored courses. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through. I think the secretary has heard you. We only have about seven minutes. Mr. Holden Chow will be next to ask question. And if there aren't other members who'd like to ask questions, next will be Dr. Ann Chang. Mr. Holden Chow, four minutes.
My question is about C S B zero four five. This is a question put by Dr. Elizabeth Quat. I'd like to follow up on this matter. This is about the grade structure review for the discipline services grades and the progress. And in the reply, it is said that it will take about eighteen months to complete the review and will be completed by the middle of twenty twenty. Dr. Quat's question, however, was very clear. She asked, in this grade structure review, whether the unions and associations of discipline services have been duly consulted and how many times were they consulted? But in the administration's reply, I don't see how many meetings or consultations the administration held with the unions. So I'd like to follow up on this question, number of consultation sessions. Secretary, thank you, Mr. Chow, for your concern about the grade structure review for discipline services grade. This review is not conducted by the C S B, but rather the Standing Committee on Discipline Services Salaries and Conditions of Service, S C D S, and also Standing Committee on Directorate Salaries and Conditions of Service, S D C S. They are invited to conduct a review of the grade structure of the discipline services as well as the directorate posts in their respective services. Previously, when invited to, invited to take part in the review, they already consulted the disciplined services. And I understand that in the end of March, the relevant associations and unions already made submissions on their request for the G S R to be conducted. They offered some very, very valuable views. The C S B also has a role to play. On a regular basis, we meet with the staff side, associations of discipline services, and there have been ample opportunities for us to exchange our views on the content of the grade structure review, and we also keep close liaison about their concerns. It's very difficult to list out the exact number of meetings, but I'd like to inform Mr. Holden Chow that we do keep very close liaison. We have the view that the G S R must be able to tackle issues that are close to the heart. I understand that the S C D S and the S D C S do not conduct a unilateral review. They must have the input from the unions and associations so that they could have more details and take a targeted approach in reviewing the structure. Dr. Ann Chang.
Chairman, I'd like to follow up on another matter. C S B zero one four, a question that I asked, my question was this. About introducing designated Chinese medicine services as part of the civil service medical benefits. Well, that was previously mentioned. In this reply to forty-one, however, they are actively examining the arrangements, but they do not have a specific timetable for the implementation of the services at this stage. Well, I was astonished. I thought that probably they are not going to introduce a service. So, Secretary, you have no idea when the service will be introduced, right? But at least there should be a deadline. You cannot have an ongoing study for a decade. Otherwise, it would be quite meaningless. So how long will your study take?
Secretary, thank you, Dr. Chang, for your keen concern about this topic. Chief Executive previously announced that defined Chinese medicine services will be included as part of the civil service benefits. Since then, we have been actively examining different proposals. The study relates to a number of areas. The mode of service is one example. Now, the conclusion at this preliminary stage is that we may operate outpatient Chinese medicine clinic for civil servants. And also, there is a voice that we should provide Chinese medicine services in the existing eighteen clinics and eligible civil servants will not be charged. And the objective primarily is to provide medical treatment. As to exact service delivery model, we still need some time to explore the options. I understand that there is a concern, especially from Dr. Ann Chang, for the early introduction of Chinese medicine services. I can only say that we are acting proactively, and once we have a timetable, we will announce a timetable. That concludes the session. Thank you, Secretary and your team. Next session will begin at three fifteen.